Sorry, I had a really hard time with the zoom.
No problem. Glad that glad you made it. That's all that matters.
Yeah, I'm I'm logging in right now through the phone. For some reason, my computer doesn't remember the password for the other email.
Oh, well, that's okay. Hopefully you'll still be able to see everything work out on the screen um big enough. How's uh how's studying been going?
It's been rough.
Yeah, a lot, lot to cover.
Yeah, it's a lot to cover and it's not my first try, so you know it's pressure.
Sure. When when's your exam date?
April first.
April first. Okay, so I'll kind of right around the corner.
Yeah, but I'm taking some time off. I'm taking Thursdays, Fridays. Um moving forward to the exam, so I'm studying. I studied yesterday a whole day today, tomorrow, you know.
That's great. Yeah, that'll definitely help me kind of maximize the the last few days leading up to it.
Yes.
All right.
When you have the, you know, negative experience, you're always thinking about that.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, sometimes the hardest thing is uh it's all about the, you know, the mental, you know, especially if if it's not your first attempt kind of going into it based off the the last time can be challenging, you know, sometimes it's like we're 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 our own biggest enemy, you know, if we get in our our own way.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's uh we'll go ahead. We'll we'll jump into it. Um we should still be able to to cover um all of the subject or questions you had, and I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Yeah, I can see it.
Good. Alright, so this first question was number two from the A I T practice exam. Not not too different from some of the examples we did a couple weeks ago during protection class. Um so this one's really just stepping the current down the current transformer from the line current from the current transformer. Did you have any specific questions about this one before I start solving it?
That was a one thing that I missed is like I use a single phase apparent power. And it's exactly the same problem, same mistake I did in this week class. You know, I did again a single phase apparent power instead of three phase.
Okay.
I just that that's the main thing like I think I need to understand where to to use it to make sure, you know, I'm using the right formula.
Sure. Okay, so how about um I'm gonna go ahead. I'll read the problem. I'll work my way through it and then I'm gonna pay uh special attention to uh the difference between three phase and single phase. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Alright, so number two says the sixty nine K V distribution system shown below provides power to a fifty five M V A sixty nine to fifteen K V three phase transformer. At a hundred percent load, the current signal input to the anti fifty one relay to the nearest amp is blank. So they were they were nice enough to provide this diagram for us. We've got uh an anti fifty two circuit breaker, a fifty to five current transformer feeding the anti fifty one inverse uh time over current relay on the primary side of the sixty nine to a hundred fifteen K V transformer. So the first thing is, yeah, if we pay attention to right here, this transformer is a three phase transformer. So I'm always gonna remind myself of that anytime I can. Um so I'd probably write on here three phase just as a reminder, especially since single phase or three phase right that symbol wasn't included in the diagram. So if this is a three phase transformer, the given ratings of the transformer, can we assume that this these would be three phase and line values or single phase and line to neutral or phase values?
Line values?
Yeah, line values. It's a it's a three phase transformer, so we're gonna assume any ratings given to us are also gonna be three phase ratings unless the problem specifies otherwise, unless it says something like the voltage across each phase of the transformer or the line to neutral voltage on the primary terminals of the transformer. But if it doesn't, if it doesn't specify anything like that, if it doesn't contradict itself, then hey, if I have a three phase transformer, I know that this is sixty nine K V line voltage on the primary. I know that this is fifteen K V line voltage on the secondary. And then I also know the power rating fifty five M V A. I know that's the total three phase apparent power that that transformer is rated to deliver. And then I also know that I can even draw kind of a bus symbol on the primary and secondary, and I can even remind myself, hey, this is a three phase sixty nine K V system. You know, straight from the problem, we have a sixty nine K V distribution system. If I have a three phase transformer, right, this is a three phase transformer, then I know that entire single line diagram is also gonna be three phase. Alright, do you have a question?
No.
So let's see, the problem says at a hundred percent transformer load, the current signal input to the anti relay to the nearest amp is blank. So the problem is asking us for, we can call this the relay current, or we can call this the C T current, same thing. So we're trying to find this value entering our anti relay being stepped down by our five hundred to five current transformer. And they're letting us know, find the relay current when the transformer is fully loaded at a hundred percent load. So if I'm trying to solve for the relay current, when the transformer is at full load, would I need to solve for the hundred percent primary current of the transformer or the secondary current?
Primary?
Yeah, primary. So here's the primary line current entering the transformer. We know we need to solve for the primary line current, not the secondary line current. Since the relay and the current transformer, they're also on the primary side of the transformer. If this current transformer and relay were on the secondary side of the transformer, that's when we would solve for the secondary current of the transformer and then step that down, but it's on the primary side.
And if that question would be fifty percent of transformer load, how that would change?
Sure, great question. Yeah, we'll we'll look at that right here. So if we want to find the current entering the relay, I know the current transform ratio five hundred to five. All I need to do is find this line current and step it down by this ratio. So according to the problem, this line current is one hundred percent transformer load. So we'll look at that and we'll look at how things would change if it was, say, fifty percent. So I'm gonna say a hundred percent. We'll call this I primary full load amps or I one, or we're just looking at the primary line current right here, but specifically at a hundred percent of the transformers full load amps. So all I'm gonna do is I'm gonna calculate this line current, and then I'm just gonna multiply it by a hundred percent, which is the same thing as multiplying by one, right? That's not really gonna change the problem. If it was fifty percent, it would, and uh we can calculate that, too. Alright, so if I know I've got voltage, I've got apparent power, I'm trying to find the line current, what formula do I use?
The three phase apparent power.
Perfect, yeah, three phase apparent power. By itself, it looks like this. Three phase apparent power equals square root of three times the magnitude of the line voltage times the magnitude of the line current. Now, biggest mistake people make with this formula is remember apparent power, whether it's three phase or single phase, apparent power is just the magnitude of complex power. Which means this formula, there is no complex numbers, no phase angles. You can only use it to calculate the magnitude of complex power. So for example, if this is three phase complex power, this formula calculates just the magnitude, but we can't use it to find the angle. That's what this formula calculates. Now, all we're gonna do, so we know the three phase apparent power rating fifty five M V A square root of three, that's just a coefficient, and we know the line voltage magnitude, so we're gonna set this whole thing equal to the line current down here. Or salt, we were using that formula to solve for the primary full load amps of this transformer, what I labeled as just the line current right here. So to do that, we've got the three phase apparent power on top. We divide by square root of three times the line voltage. Now, question, I've got two different line voltages on this transformer, which line voltage do I use here to solve for my primary line current?
The primary one?
Perfect, yeah, we're gonna use sixty nine K V. We're solving for the current on the primary side of the transformer, which means you need to use the voltage on the primary side of the transformer.
Why would we use the the secondary one?
We would use
To calculate what?
We would use fifteen K V. If I replaced sixty nine K V with fifteen K V here, instead of calculating the primary line current, we'd calculate the secondary line current leaving the transformer.
But what would this value help us with?
In this case, we don't, we don't need the secondary line current leaving that transformer because our relay and our current transformer are on the primary side of the transformer.
So basically, even technically, we're now gonna find it in this type of application because it's always on the primary side. Uh the relay is gonna be.
So this is, you could call this, you know, this is primary transformer protection. This relay is probably wired to the transformers primary breaker. It's overcurrent protection. If we needed to calculate the secondary overcurrent protection, you know, not shown, right? I could have another anti fifty, another excuse me, anti fifty two relay on the secondary side of that transformer, we'd have another current transformer and a relay wired to control the secondary breaker. And uh in that case, we would need to calculate the secondary transformer current so that we could step it down by a current transform ratio on the secondary side. Alright, so we're just gonna plug in some values. We've got the three phase apparent power rating of the transformer from the problem is fifty five M V A. And we're dividing by the square root of three times the primary transformer rated line voltage sixty nine K V. And then notice that to find a hundred percent of the transformers rated current, we multiply by a hundred percent, which again, it's not really gonna make a difference because multiplying by a hundred percent, that's the same thing. It's multiplying by one, right? If I type it in my calculator, a hundred percent, it's just gonna give us back one. So a hundred percent transformer load, that's the same thing as our transformers primary full load amps or the transformers primary rated line current. Let's see, fifty five M V A divided by the square root of three times sixty nine K V. And we get uh four hundred sixty point two amps. So that's this line current right here. That's the line current entering the primary side of the fifty five M V A three phase transformer. So now that we know that current, all we're gonna do is we're gonna step it down by the current transformer ratio to calculate the current entering the anti fifty one relay.
Yeah, that part part I understand. I just, I think, and this type of problems is just my biggest miss is a use the right formula.
Sure, okay. Yeah, here anytime, anytime if I see three phase or single phase, like my my eyes are laser focused on that because that's always gonna change uh the formulas we use. So for example, if it was a single phase transformer instead, if the problem said a get my blue pen.
If a problem says three single phase transformers connected to the three phase.
Uh huh.
What and uh how that was some, that's something is that I'm always having a hard time, you know, because it was three single ones connected to make a three phase. And in this case, wh- what would I use?
Sure. So if we had, if the problem said instead of a fifty five M V A sixty nine to fifteen K V three phase transformer, if we had three single phase transformers rated for this value, then this would be single phase apparent power. This would be the single phase voltage ratio. We would need to know how this transformer is connected. Is it delta Y? Is it Y delta, Y Y delta, delta? And we would have to calculate the overall three phase voltage ratio from the single phase voltage ratio, depending on how it's connected. Uh you end up with, you know, like a hidden square to three in the voltage ratio. If it's a delta Y or Y delta connected. And that's uh if we have time, we can certainly try that, but that's a whole different subject from transformer connections.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to point out one more thing since you asked about it. Um if the transformer said, or if the problem said instead, if we solve our three phase transformer, but instead of a hundred percent transformer load, if it was fifty percent transformer load, and the only thing that would have changed in this formula right here is we would have changed our load multiplier from a hundred percent, we would have changed it to fifty percent. Fifty percent of our rated current. Essentially, it's half loaded. And so that would be just point five. This value right here, we already calculated, right, about four hundred and sixty amps. So if we divide that by two or multiply by point five or multiply by uh fifty percent, we'd end up with two thirty point one.
Yeah, we can move to the next one.
Great. And did this, did this make sense?
Mm hmm.
Good.
I think I just need to go back and review the transformer connections and just work the problems again there.
Sure. And uh all, you know, you always wanna be looking for are the values three phase or the value single phase? Um do I need to convert from single phase to per phase? Do I need to convert from per face to three phase? I know I'm always, always looking for those identifiers that can change the problem. Alright, so let's see, thirty five, you asked about why we use the particular motor circuit that we did. So thirty five says, consider the three phase two hundred and eight volts sixty her wound rotor induction motor with the following equivalent circuit parameters. They give us the stator resistance and reactance, the referred rotor resistance and reactance, core loss resistance and the magnetizing reactance, pretty much all of the parameters in the induction motor equivalent circuit. Then they ask for what's the Thevenin equivalent stator resistance back to the power supply?
So what mistake I've done here, I used other um diagram, and because of that, my end result was different.
Sure. So let's look at the two motor circuits that we have to pick from.
Yeah, I picked the second one.
Mm hmm, the approximate circuit.
Mm hmm.
So the first one on the left, this is on page fifty four of the reference handbook. This is what's known as the exact circuit. And then the following circuit on page fifty five of the reference handbook, this is known as the approximate circuit. Very similar to the exact and approximate transformer circuit, the motor circuits come from transformer circuits. Um, do you know the main difference between these two circuits?
Just for the calculation, I think in the class you mentioned, we just moved it. So to the, to the other side.
Yep. So there is a mistake in the reference handbook. The reference handbook says something along the lines of by referring the rotor values to primary, we can make the approximate circuit, and that's, that's not true. On the exact circuit, these rotor values with the two subscript, they've already been referred to the stator side. So the difference between the exact and the approximate circuit is this core branch right here. We're breaking the rules of circuit analysis and we're moving that core branch, we're moving this entire thing to the input terminals at positive V one and negative V one. There's that same parallel branch. And again, we've moved it. Here's positive V one. Here's negative V one. So the benefit of doing that is it greatly simplifies circuit analysis. Otherwise, we have, there's a current divider right here at this node right here. And to figure out the no load current, we first have to figure out I one. It becomes very difficult. We'd have to find all of this in parallel with our core branch. So it greatly simplifies analysis, but it comes with a little bit of accuracy difference. Most of the problems on the P exam, I'd say ninety five percent of the problems, you're gonna be using the approximate circuit. But there, there could potentially be a few when you have to recognize when it makes sense to use the exact circuit. Now, how do you know which one to use? Well, if the problem includes the circuit, then right away we know which one to use. In this case, all they did was they told us all of the parameters, right? One subscripts are stator, two subscripts are rotor, C and M are the stator core values. So all of these values are in both circuits. But when, when they ask for the Thevenin equivalent stator resistance back to the power supply, we're essentially being asked to just calculate these stator values using, you know, a technique back from the F E exam, the Thevenin equivalent when we short the power supply and find the new total uh the new total impedance.
Yeah, so on this one, I have worked this problem. I used the approximate.
Yeah, so here, you're gonna be more accurate using the exact circuit. And if you look at the exact circuit, notice how the stator variables are separate from the rotor variable. So here's the rotor, excuse me, stator resistance, stator leakage reactance. Here's the core loss resistance and the stator core magnetizing reactance in the stator core. So if I were to divide the exact circuit, this is all the stator to the left. And then everything on the right, this would be the rotor, referred rotor circuit. You have all of your two subscripts. Here, if we were to do the same for the approximate circuit, here would be the stator portion. Here would be the rotor portion. But the thing we gotta recognize is we've, you know, this is, this is kind of a fake circuit, right? We've manipulated it by physically moving where these terminals land. So if I were to calculate, if I were to, you know, short circuit the voltage and then calculate the Thevenin impedance from here to here, I know it's not gonna be the actual Thevenin impedance because this is not the true actual circuit. Most of the times, what they're gonna ask you for the P exam, if you're using circuit analysis, you can't really calculate it using the exact circuit, or you can't really calculate it without greater difficulty, which is why we we almost always use the approximate circuit. But here, if I know all of my parameters, I know I'm gonna get a much more accurate value for the seven and equivalent stator resistance if I use the actual true exact circuit instead of the approximate circuit. Does that make sense?
Kind of, but like again, you know, like I've done the, like I use because of, you know, approximate was the easiest.
Sure.
So I use that and that was my mistake. And so I was like, okay. So how would I know in what's case I use this versus that? So most of the time, I'm still gonna go with approximate is just like in this scenario, I had to go with exact.
Yeah. Yeah, if you if it asked for maybe the approximate Thevenin equivalent state of resistance, that would be a clue that they're not looking for the exact, but here, you know, there's no more difficulty in calculating the Thevenin equivalent using the exact circuit compared to the approximate circuit. So I mean, you always wanna use the more accurate circuit model that you can. And again, most of the problems, you can't really use the exact circuit because you'd have to find, you could, it just takes w- way too long for what would be a P E problem. In other words, to find, to find I one using the exact circuit, we'd have to take this whole parallel branch. We'd have to find the equivalent resistance in parallel with J X two R two times R two one minus S R S. Then we could add it in series with R one and X one. We could finally use that to find I one. You know, then with I one, we could find the voltage drop across R one J X one. Then once we know the voltage drop across that, we finally know the voltage drop across our core. It's, it's way outside the scope of the P exam. You know, you're looking at a twenty or thirty minute problem compared to the approximate circuit, most of your circuit analysis relationships. You're using the applied voltage V one as your voltage directly across the core. So you don't have to go through that whole exercise just to find the voltage across the core. So yeah, it it really just comes down to practicing familiarity, like a lot of the subjects on the P Z M. Uh it's really just recognizing, okay, when does it make sense to use my approximate circuit? Am I, you know, doing circuit analysis where just, you know, I don't have the time to really go through the exact circuit? Or um can I just plug in the values in my exact circuit? If if there's no time difference between using either model, then you typically are gonna wanna use the exact circuit.
Okay. Yeah, that was the biggest mistake. I mean, I'm familiar with the Tevin and equivalent is just I use a wrong model, and that's why my answer was different from yours.
Sure. I would say um another time when you, when you can, when you should use the exact circuit instead of the approximate circuit, another good type of problem is if I already know the amount of current drawn by the motor, if they give me R one and they give me, sorry, if they give me I one, the current drawn by the motor and R one, my stator resistance, if they ask for the stator copper losses, then you want to use the exact circuit. That's just uh I one squared times R one. You can calculate these uh the stator copper losses using the approximate circuit, but am I still gonna use I one squared, or am I gonna use a different current?
Uh I two here.
Yeah, you'd have to use I two using the approximate circuit. So you're gonna get, you're gonna get a much different value for your stator copper losses using the approximate compared to the exact. But again, you can only really use the exact circuit for this if they tell you, hey, your motor draws this many amps. Okay, that's I one, right? That's would also be right here, I one, and the stator resistance is you know, one point four five ohms. In that case, I'm looking at these two models. Hey, it's actually easier to use the exact circuit if I've got those two parameters already to calculate my stator copper losses compared to over here. I'd have to find I O first, subtract I O from I one using Kirchhoff's current law to get I two to only calculate a stator copper loss that's less accurate than the exact circuit. So that's one of the the classic uh problems where you'd also use the exact circuit.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm hmm.
Great. Um, I'm, I'm assuming you're already familiar with the math behind the Thevenin equivalent. I'm assuming.
Correct. Yes, it's just, I use the wrong for, wrong uh, circuit. Equivalent. So I, and that's why my answer was wrong, the different. Not wrong, different.
Yeah. And you know. Again. Nine, I would say ninety five percent of motor circuit problems in the P exam, you're probably going to be working with the approximate circuit anyways. It just comes into knowing, hey, is this a problem when they're actually testing me on the exact circuit? And if so, what are the possible clues in the problem to, to let me know to, to indicate that?
Okay.
All right, let's take a look at twenty one, also from the A I T practice exam. Let's see, here's just the solution. So let's see, twenty one says a single line to ground fault occurs on bus A in the three phase network shown below. So again, I'm. Whether or not that makes a difference, as soon as I see three phase, kind of like the first problem we talked about, you know, I'm laser. Focused on that to see if it does make a difference. Um, a single line to ground fault occurs on bus A on the three phase system shown below, the total complex equivalent impedance of the zero sequence network rounded to do to two decimal places is blank plus J blank. And it's in per unit. So we got a single phase, we got a single line diagram, we have a Y connected generator, that's resistance grounded. Feeding a delta solid Y grounded transformer. Here's uh, bus A where the fault is. And then bus A feeds a Y solid grounded motor. And again, I'm going to remind myself, hey, this is a, this is a three phase system, whether or not that makes a difference, we're going to see, but. Anytime I see three phase, I'm writing down three phase. If I see single phase, I'm writing down single phase, just that when I work this problem. If I need to differentiate between those two relationships, I've already got it noted down. So this is also, this is a bit of a trick question, right? Look, we've got all of these zero sequence impedance values, zero sequence impedance. And really the reactants of our generator, the resistance of our generator ground, zero sequence reactants of our transformer, zero sequence reactants of our motor. So really it's just asking us to draw the zero sequence network, zero sequence circuit. And then calculate the total impedance of the zero sequence circuit. So look at this, is this a, is this a red herring? A single line to ground fault occurs on bus A?
Yeah.
So it helps to know where the fault occurs. Cause that changes how we add up our. Impedances on the zero sequence network, but single line to ground fault. The, the single line to ground fault doesn't matter. It's just asking, hey, what's the zero sequence impedance? Looking at bus A, that's all it's asking. Alright, so let's try.
So that was a herring, that single line to ground.
Yeah, it was. Now, if we had a three phase, is, if we had a three phase ground fault. Um. There's no zero sequence network for three phase ground fault, so it would just be zero. Uh, line to line fault, there's no zero sequence, that would be zero in the fault circuit. Um, only a single line to ground fault and a double line to ground fault. But once we know that we have a zero sequence network on this fault circuit, we're just, we're just calculating the Z zero equivalent. Alright, so let's see if we can draw the, the zero sequence network. Um, the first thing we do, and this is very similar to class eight on, on. Fault analysis and symmetrical components. First thing that we'll do is let's draw the positive sequence network first. So are you familiar with the rules for drawing a positive sequence network? It's a very similar to a single phase equivalent circuit.
The, the positive, yes, you, you, you add the source. And you have uh. The component. Correct? And the negative is you don't, is the same as a positive, but it doesn't have a, the source and it's zero. It's different. I mean, it's in the book. I don't, I'm not memorize them. I don't, I.
Let's uh, let's try it. So we'll, we'll draw the positive sequence network. And really, I'm just looking at connecting. All of the devices and machines. I want to connect them the way they're connected in our single line diagram. So first we've got our generator. This would be the generator's positive sequence reactants. That generator feeds a delta Y solid grounded transformer. So that's going to be the transformers positive sequence reactants. And then we've got another motor down here. So we're going to have a motor also connected to the reference bus. Now motors. When you draw a positive sequence network. You still have to include a voltage source for a motor. Think of this as the internal voltage. In, in, in the motor. During a fault, any rotating magnetic fields kind of act as voltage sources. And then this would be the motors positive sequence reactants. So if I were to label all these. Let's make this uh, black so it stands out. See if I can zoom in just a little bit. So this would be the voltage supplied by the generator. This is the generator's positive sequence reactants. This is now we're at the transformer. This is the transformers positive sequence reactants right here. This would be the voltage. Of the motor only in the positive sequence network during a fault. And this is the motors positive sequence. Reactants as well. And that's it. That's our positive sequence network. And then this is the reference bus. We're going to use this now to draw the negative sequence network. Do I have room? We'll add a new page. So we got the positive sequence network. How do we go from the positive sequence network to the negative sequence network? There's two changes we got to make.
Remove the source. And change the, the positive. To and, to the negative.
Perfect. Yeah. And when we remove the sources, the voltages, all we're doing is we're just gonna short circuit them.
And shouldn't we have ones there right now? Not zeros?
Yep, that'll be next. So.
No, you have a zeros right now.
Yep. So we. The first step is we short circuit any voltage supplies that were on the positive sequence network. And then instead of using, oh, I see what you mean. Yep, you're right. This, these should be ones instead of zeros. Great eye for the positive sequence network. That's the positive sequence reactants of the generator. Positive sequence reactants of the transformer and positive sequence reactants for the motor. Alright, so we've, we've shorted our. Voltage sources. And now we replace the positive sequence reactants, not the negative or zero sequence. We replace the positive sequence reactants values with their negative sequence reactants values. And that gives us the negative sequence network. Alright, we've got the negative sequence network. The last step is to turn it into the zero sequence network. And then once we know the zero sequence network, we can calculate the total zero sequence impedance. So there's uh. About three different things we need to do. To go from the negative sequence network to the zero sequence network. Do you know what they are?
Um. We need to include the R ground.
Sure. Uh huh. So let's, let's see, do we have any? Grounds, we sure do. There's a, this generator is Y. Connected and resistance grounded. And we have a solid Y grounded transformer, solid Y grounded motor. But these are solid grounds, not resistance, not reactants, not impedance. So first, let's just put this resistance value one point nine per unit. What do I need to always do to my? To my grounds when I put them in the zero sequence network?
Open them? I don't remember.
We, you have to multiply the value by.
Ah, by three, yeah. That, yeah.
So whatever the value. Of the resistance. For my grounded generator. We multiply it by three. Alright, that was the only resistance. On the ground or reactants or impedance. It's, it was the only non solidly grounded. Machine. Um, so now what's the second step we got to do?
Change everything to zero?
Sure. So instead of the negative sequence reactances and impedances, we're going to use the zero sequence because we're drawing the zero sequence network. Alright, we got one more change to do. Are you familiar?
Um. We have to, I think it's this transformer, correct, that we have to open. It is just. Different configuration for the um. The presentation.
Yep. So we look at our single line diagram. And all of these, any Y or delta connections. So the easiest ones. My, the motor. Solid to Y connected to ground isn't going to change anything. So here's the reference handbook on, this is page sixty nine. And we're just looking at loads. Here's a, that's like our solid Y grounded motor. Now they're showing this inverted with the reference bus on top. We're currently drawing it with the reference bus on bottom. Same thing, just a different way to show it. But the solid grounded motor. Right here. There's not going to be a change, right? We're just. Connecting it to the reference bus. Like we already have. Right here, here's our motor. Here's the zero sequence reactants of the motor. And it's connected to the reference bus. So that's good. The generator, we already took care of, the generator is resistance grounded in this case. So we've got our zero sequence impedance of the generator right here. And then here's three times the grounding impedance. Three times the grounding impedance, that's good. So now the only thing left to deal with in terms of the delta Y connections is this transformer. So this is taking care of the solid Y grounded motor. This is taking care of the resistance Y grounded generator. So now we're looking at just this delta Y connection. So now. Back in the reference handbook, on the following page, it shows all of our transformer connections. Just for the zero sequence network, right? This only happens on the zero sequence network. We've got a wa- solid Y grounded delta. Which is just the opposite of what we have, right? We have a delta primary Y solid ground. So we're going to take this relationship and we're just flipping it. Looking at this diagram. On the delta side, we have an open circuit. On the solid grounded Y side. We have a short to the reference bus. So here's our zero sequence network. Here's our transformer. That's the transformers zero sequence impedance. Our transformer, again, instead of solid Y delta, we have a. Delta solid Y. So we're just doing this in reverse.
Mm hmm.
On the delta primary side. We have an open circuit. To the reference bus. And then. On the. Y solid grounded side. We have a short. To the reference bus.
Mm hmm.
Alright, the last step is, do you remember where the fault occurred?
On the bus A?
Bus A. Yep. So it says faults on bus A. Calculate these zero sequence impedance. So the fault location can sometimes change where we. How we connect our zero sequence network and our positive and our negative. It can change things from series to parallel. So looking at the positive sequence network, can you see where bus A is where that fault location would be? It's in between what two devices?
Transformer and motor.
Yeah, it's in between, here's the positive sequence impedance of the transformer, here's the positive sequence impedance. And the voltage for the motor. So we can kind of show it like this, like the, we can show it right here, we can show it even right here. There's the fault. On the positive sequence network between the transformer and the motor. Same location. On the negative sequence network between the transformer and the motor. And then our zero sequence network. So this is bus A. That's where the fault is located. So here's what we do with that information. Here's how that can kind of change the problem. Wherever the fault is. It's the voltage across. From the fault location to your reference bus. That's going to be your voltage component. Here, this is the zero sequence network, so this is the zero sequence voltage. And then the current. Flowing into the positive sequence voltage, that would be our, excuse me, into the. Negative sequence voltage, that would also. One more time into the zero sequence voltage, that would be our zero sequence current, just looking at zeros, not ones or twos, not to confuse you.
Mm hmm.
So then, yeah, notice because the fault is here. Here's our zero sequence current, here's our zero sequence voltage. So notice what that does to, to the zero sequence network. First of all, does. Does anything from our generator get included?
No.
No, why not?
It's open.
Yeah, it's open because of the delta primary. So that's like totally disconnected. From our zero sequence current and the zero sequence voltage. So we get to ignore or neglect everything about the generator. Alright, looking at. Again, the fault location here, what does that do to our transformer zero sequence impedance? And the motor zero sequence impedance? Are they in series or are they in parallel?
In parallel.
Yeah, they're in parallel. They share the same two nodes. They share this node. And they share this node. So I can redraw this entire zero sequence network. Same network, we're just simplifying it. It's going to look like this. Here's. V A zero. Flowing out of the network, this is. I A zero. And this right here, this is going to be the transformer. Zero sequence impedance and parallel with the motor. Zero sequence impedance, that's going to be our total. Z zero. Z zero. That's exactly what those, this problem was asking for. What is the total equivalent zero sequence impedance with a fault on bus A? Here's, here's, that's a bus A. So this circuit, it's just a simplified version of this circuit. We're just really, we're really just combining these two in parallel. And then here's bus A, or we can call this bus A, same thing. Same node. So then to solve it, we're just adding.
Over sum.
Yep, product over sum, that's all.
It seems like so easy, but when like, you know, I'm working myself, it's just, it's easy to solve with you, but when I'm by myself, it's not that easy.
Sure, yeah, I, I mean, I, you know, you're going to take the P exam, you're going to pass, you're going to move on. For me, it's, I'm always taking the P exam, right? For me, I, I live every day working these types of problems, so. Um, yeah, it's always going to seem easier the first time you learn it when someone's walking you through it. Like it's, uh, the best thing to do is always, always to repeat these on your own right after. Um, to try to redo it, I would say as soon as possible after this study session. And that kind of helps just with repetition and with memory. So let's see, we've got the transformer zero sequence and we've got the motor zero sequence values. All we're going to do, yeah, we're just going to use, we're going to use product over sum. So we've got the transformer is J times 0.67 per unit. And the motor is J times 0.80 per unit. So let's see the calculator. We do a fraction sign. J point six seven times J point eight, there's our product. And then the same two numbers, but now we just sum them, J point six seven.
Plus zero point thirty six.
Yeah. And then we can easily just tell our calculator, hey, give me that number instead of polar. Give me that number in rectangular. So we get J zero point three six per unit.
Angle ninety.
Which is the same. So notice how the, the question asks for it in, uh, in rectangular.
Mm-hmm.
What value do I have for my resistance?
Nothing, zero.
Zero. We get zero plus J, let's see, look on the calculator, uh, zero point three six.
Yeah, and I think on this book too, on your, the AID questions, the AIT, like I had a couple of them that getting to the round two, the whatever, you know, and I got it like that wrong. Like I had the right answer, but I rounded it wrong.
Well, I mean, the good news on, so the, the P exam, there's going to be a little bit of a range on any of the, you know, you're, you're not going to get a ton of fill in the blanks, but you'll probably get a handful. Um, there, there's going to be a range of accuracy. Unfortunately, MCE, yes, they're not, they're not public with what that range is. So that's why I always recommend doing everything in your calculator and just rounding at the very end. You'll have the, the greatest accuracy. So this whole problem, all we were really doing was just solving for this complex impedance right here. And we can say that's either point three six per unit at ninety degrees in polar or rectangular, since that's what the problem asked for. That's like zero plus J times zero point three six per unit.
Yeah, that could be like the, the quick three minute question, as long as you know how to write all the, the positive, negative and zero.
Yeah, once, once you get the hang of this, um, once you get the hang of this, it's pretty easy to just look at this and to draw the, the zero sequence network. So let's see, we got, we got just enough time, um. How about this, we'll try that last, that homework problem from symmetrical components, which is very similar. And it's a, a lot busier, right? It's a much bigger single line diagram, really testing you on the zero sequence networks. We'll see if we, instead of drawing the positive and then the negative and then the zero, I think I, I included enough space for that. Um, let's see if we can just go straight to the zero sequence network. How about, I'll show you how I would do this if I'm solving this on the P exam. Sounds good?
Yes.
Alright. Um, so we've got a much bigger single line diagram. Um, so this particular, okay, so this particular problem asks for the positive, negative and zero. But I really think the zero sequence network is, is where we need the most practice. It is a three phase system shown below. It's not going to make a difference in this problem. Uh, it does specify, draw the reference bus on the bottom of the circuit, so not inverted like we sometimes see. And we're just going to use variables. So first thing I'm looking at, if I have a zero sequence network, I'm looking for where are my grounds? Anything that's resistance, impedance or reactance grounded. So I'm looking at, let's see, generator one, generator two, we've got an impedance ground, so now I'm going to have to multiply them by three on my zero sequence network. And then this is a solid ground. I don't have to worry about any three times because there's nothing in here. And I know if it's Y solid grounding, I'm just going to connect to the reference bus, no different than a single phase equivalent circuit. So I'm really not really worried about this. And then the next thing I look at is my transformers. These are all going to have different connections to the reference bus. We've got a delta solid grounded Y, like we had in the last problem. But now we've got a delta delta and a Y solid Y grounded, solid Y grounded transformer, transformer T three. So yeah, we're just going to go straight to the zero sequence network. So looking at the single line diagram, I've got essentially, look, how does this entire branch? How is that connected with this entire branch?
In parallel?
Yes, they're in parallel. But what about, how are the two of these connected with this entire branch?
In series?
Careful, it's actually, it's also in parallel. All three of these are in.
Oh, because it was in the opposite side, it just looked like it's in series. But it's just tricky. If you just put it on the opposite side, it's going to be all three of them and, uh.
Yeah, what if we just, it's upside down, but what if I connected it like this?
Yeah, they're all in. That's tricky.
Here we go. Yeah. If I, if we drew it like that instead, you can, we can see they're all, it's all in parallel. Even, so this is a generator, but even if this was a motor, it would be, it's all in parallel. In other words, the voltage of this bus is the same, right?
So you're saying, but if it would be a motor and like after the motor, we would have a bus, then that would be a series. Like if there's two generators serving the line, serving transformer, serving a motor, and it would be, oh no, they're still in parallel.
Still in parallel. On parallel, we could say the line impedance is in series with the transformer. The transformer is in series with the motor, right? That's fine. But this, this whole branch is in parallel with this and is in parallel with this. They're all connected to the same bus. Even if it was a motor. And that'll, that, when we draw it out too, that'll become much more, uh, apparent. Alright, so I'm going to start with this, I'm going to start with this branch right here. Let's make this, uh, blue. Alright, starting with this branch. Um, we've got a generator. We have a transformer. We go up and across. And we have a line impedance. Let's call the, how about, let's call this, let's just call this the bus. Alright, we only have one bus. So this point right here. The reference bus is on bottom. But this point right here, that's this entire bus right here. Alright, this is, if we're going to draw the zero sequence network, let's make this, uh, J X generator one zero sequence. This is the transformer, this will be J X transformer one zero sequence. And then we have the line impedance number one zero sequence. What do I do to this voltage for the generator number one? If we're drawing the zero sequence network?
What do you do to it?
Mm-hmm. Does that voltage go away on the zero sequence network?
Oh, I shorted. Yeah, we're not doing positive. I'm like, okay, yeah.
Yep, so we would short it to go from positive to negative. And then to draw the zero sequence, I gotta, I gotta take care of this right here, right?
You have to multiply by, show the resistance and multiply by three.
Perfect. So that's a Z impedance resistance, so I'm going to show it like an impedance. So that's three times ZG one, multiplying by three just for the ground impedance, just for the zero sequence network. Alright, generator's good to go. Let's do the transformer. Transformer is delta Y grounded. So what do we do with the delta Y grounded transformer?
But the delta and, and the Y, we're just, the delta is going to be open, the Y is going to be connected to the, to the reference bus.
Perfect. Delta is open, solid grounded Y connects to the reference bus. Alright, transformer one is good, generator number one is good. Don't got to worry about anything with the line impedance, as long as we're using the positive sequence line impedance. Alright, now let's take care of this branch right here. And I think for this branch, so we've got a generator impedance, delta delta transformer. Uh, I'm going to lower this, I'm going to give us some more room to work with. Alright, so now this branch is in parallel with the branch we just drew, so I'm going to draw it right here. Still connected to that same bus. So we've got generator. We've got the generator impedance. We've got a transformer impedance. Or reactance rather. Alright, if this is J X G two zero sequence, then this is J transformer two zero sequence. No line impedance. What do I do to the voltage for the zero sequence network?
You just short it.
I short it. And then is generator number two, does it have an impedance ground?
Yes.
Yep, so what do I do? I include that and then I gotta, I gotta do one more thing.
Multiply by three.
Perfect, just like generator one. So it's going to be three times, that's called ZG two. Alright, generator is good. Hmm, this transformer is delta delta connected. So we go back in the reference handbook. Here's our delta, delta connected transformer. And what do you notice? What do we do to its, this is the zero sequence impedance of this entire delta delta transformer. Look at the connection to the reference bus.
We just connect it to the reference bus.
We short it to the reference bus on both sides. So here's the zero sequence impedance of our delta delta transformer. Here's my reference bus. And we're just shorting it to zero. Excuse me, shorting it to the reference bus. This is the delta primary right here. And that's the delta secondary. Alright, ready for the last branch?
Yes.
So now we're looking at the final branch, the generator three branch. So again, it's all still in parallel. So I'm going to connect it from this bus, same bus to ground. So they're all in parallel, right? Here's the first branch is from the bus to the reference. Second branch from the bus to the reference. Of course, there's an open circuit because there's delta connections. But then this third branch, same thing, we're going from this, whatever the shared bus is right here, down to the reference bus. So following it along, I've got a line impedance. That's going to be Z line two. The second line impedance, drawing this zero sequence network, we need to use the zero sequence impedance. Let's see, next I have a transformer. First, I'm just going to draw the zero sequence impedance and then we can worry about changing the connection. So this would be X reactance transformer three, and of course, zero sequence reactance for the zero sequence network. And then we'll come down into our generator. This is generator three reactance zero sequence. Alright, what do I do to the voltage for generator three?
Just short it.
Yeah, just short it out. Does generator three have, what kind of ground does it have?
Just regular.
Yeah, this is a solid ground. It's, we're just taking a conductor, landing it on the neutral, landing it on the nearest ground point. Do I have to worry about any change to the reference bus for the solid Y grounded generator?
No.
Nope, we just connect it straight to the reference bus, so that's good. So now the last thing to worry about is transformer three. So for transformer three, we look for a YY. We're back on page seventy of our reference handbook.
YY grounded, not just YY. Because I saw that they have a different configuration there.
Yeah, good eye. So here's our solid Y grounded Y. Look at that. There's no connection to the reference bus. We just pass straight through, this is the zero sequence impedance of this transformer, so we just pass right through it on the zero sequence network. So here's my transformer three, Y grounded primary, Y grounded secondary. I'm not making any changes, we're just passing right through.
It just stays as is?
Yeah, just stays as is. Yeah, just stays as it is. This whole thing down here is our reference bus. And that's it, that's the. This is the entire zero sequence network for that three branch, single line diagram, all in parallel.
But you said that you would draw it like, that, that's how would you solve, but you're still doing the zero, still showing all the. Uh, sources and later changing them, just still have the steps by steps. So you're not going directly to the zero.
Exactly, yeah, for me personally, I find it easier to remind myself that it's there. Um, I like to show it and then I fix it, so it's kind of a hybrid, I'm not going directly to zero sequence, I'm kinda just. So, um, it's really like I'm starting with positive, going to negative, going to zero. But. I'm only showing my zero sequence impedances from the beginning, so it's still, yeah, it's a very similar. I find if I do it that way. Kind of guiding my way through it, I'm less likely to make mistakes.
But you think that question like this would appear because of that you have to draw it and it's hard to draw on the. On the computer, you know, something like that, they might just have option A, B, C and D. But I don't think so, they would just ask to. To draw it, but who knows?
No, a hundred percent, and remember, we gotta remember that, so this was a homework problem for class eight. So the goal of this problem was, let's get a lot of practice with how the different connection types. Change our connection to the reference bus. So for a homework problem from class, this was intended to, let's get a lot of extra practice, let's see how the different changes go with the zeros, go to the reference bus. For the PE exam, I would imagine a much simpler single line diagram. Um, than three branches in parallel, two line impedances, three transformers, two generators, it's a lot. I would assume a much more simplified single line diagram, but you're absolutely correct, they could say. Select, um, select out of the choices below, the zero sequence network shown for the single line diagram. And which case you'd have A, B, C or D. And in which case I'm looking, okay, if they're asking me for zero sequence, I'm looking for which, which diagrams can I eliminate right away? Did any of them not include three times? The impedance for any grounds, I'll look for that, I'll look for, you know, delta Y grounded or Y grounded delta are easy to spot, because you've got. An open on one side, a short to the reference bus on the other, so I'm looking, you know, can I, can I easily eliminate out of the four or five answers? You know, did any of them include a voltage source? Well, that's not on the zero sequence network, I can remove that answer choice. And then I'm just gonna slowly go down to, I can like definitively say, okay, this is definitely the zero sequence. Everything, all the grounding impedances are multiplied by three, there's no voltage sources, we're only using our zero impedance values. And then all of the connections to the reference bus for all of the different connection types are, are correct. That's what I would look for.
Yeah, it's look easy. When you explain.
Yeah, it, it definitely takes practice, definitely takes practice. And then for me, what always gets me is, you know, the positive, negative and zero sequence, for me, they're, they're tongue twisters. I can always write them out correctly, but, um, when I'm, I'll do it in class and like I did just now in the study session, I'll constantly. Say the wrong number. Or actually, on the first zero, on the first positive sequence network we drew, I wrote zero sequence. Uh, for me, it's like a minor dys, dyslexia thing towards. I know I have to pay extra attention to that, just because that's where I tend to make a mistake. Where it's like, I know better, but the positive, negative, zero, it's so easy to kinda go back and forth.
Mm hmm.
Alright, any, uh, any, any questions on this one? We're just about out of time for today.
No, it's good. That was really helpful.
Good.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry for being late.
Hey, I, it happens to the best of us, um, I know especially joining as a panelist, it can, uh. It can sometimes give you trouble, especially with the Zoom account, so that's not a problem at all, I didn't have any appointments after this, so. It's, uh, it's no big deal for me to go over. Alright, so let's see, you said your exam date was April second.
First.
First, April Fool's Day, um, so that's actually the first day of end of live class one, are you on the unlimited package?
Yes.
Great, um, if you haven't already, I, I would definitely encourage you to work through the end of live class test recording from last semester. Since you're taking the exam on, uh, that class's date for the semester, I'd definitely work that through.
Okay, yeah, I'm probably gonna do. Uh, right now, I download the, I think you sent it to all the problems yesterday.
Yep.
Yeah, I already downloaded them, so I'm just gonna print them and work them through.
Good, and, um, any luck with the new qualitative questions, that new book?
I mean, it's rough, I have it like a book to go to sleep, you know, I'm reading them and I'm falling asleep, it's just like. It's a lot.
Yeah, so the, the P exam, right, it's becoming more and more qualitative. Um, so you'll be using less and less of your calculator, so you definitely wanna make sure you, you go through those qualitative practice problems, that'll be a really big help on the P exam. Like, you're gonna see a lot of similar qualitative problems like that.
Yeah, I didn't do the full eight hours on the qualitative problems yet, I do it per subject.
Perfect.
I have to go per, uh, I have a book, so, um, and. Um. Probably maybe next week or week after, I'm just gonna do a whole eight hour, it's just eight hours, it's just. It's hard for me, it's like, I like to go like maybe forty questions and go back and just work it through. And go another forty questions and work it through, so you still remember what you, what thoughts you had while you were trying to solve it. I still do eight hours, but I just do it once, I don't do it like. More than once a week.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that's really all you need, as long as you're doing. One eight hour session a day, even if you're doing, you know. Four hours and then review the problems and then another four hours and then review the problems, that's okay. Really, the goal is just, just getting used to, you know, when we're, when we're locked in that testing center in the computer, you know, there's, there's, there's no escape. So it's just kinda building up that mental endurance, so if, if you're, as long as you're doing one eight hour, uh, day a week, you'll be in good shape. And with the qualitative questions, that's, that's the best way to study them, that's exactly how that book is designed, is. Pretty much once a week after each class, it's, you know, it's, uh, doing that all in one goes very tough, because it's, it's all qualitative, right? So kinda splitting it up by subject that follows the class order, that's, that's the best way to approach that. So you're, you're doing, you're doing just fine.
And I think I'm already memorizing, like, just even that, the, I just know how they are, some of them, especially like the first subject, you know, because it was like. A, B, C, D, you already know it's C, like question three is C, because you already have done it so many times, you're kind of already. Just learning it, memorizing it, so it's helpful.
Good, good. Alright, Valentino, hey, it was great meeting you, um, yeah, I hope this session was helpful for you, keep up the hard work, especially on those days you're taking off, so you can really cram. And hey, best of luck on the P exam, let me know how you do when your results come in.
Thank you so much.
Alright.
I want you now, bye bye, thank you.